Okay. All right, I need a motion to come out of executive session, please. Trustee Tobin?
Second.
Second, trustee Kershaw. Discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Both? Motion carried, we're now out of executive section. Next item on our agenda is our some discussion items. First, we have the review of the proposed agenda for the meeting of October 14th, 2020. Everybody's had a chance to take a look at that agenda. So... There any discussion items on there? Okay, next discussion item is a review of the June 30th, 2020 external audit with John Chabon from Lumsden and McCormick. He is here tonight. Welcome back, Mr. Chabon.
Thank you.
I want you to have the floor.
I'll try to be as speedy as I can.
You need to speak into the mic.
Into the mic.
Yes.
You should have at your place something that looks like this. And this is really what I'm going to be speaking from, even though you've got financial statements and other documents, this is going to summarize all of them. We did have an audit committee meeting on September 16th, 2020. Basically, this is the process that we went through. Since we spent, we were very deep in that conversation, I'm just going to try to give you the highlights of the 2020 year end. There were three separate audit opinions. One is on, you generally accept the accounting principles of the financial statements. One is on Yellow Book standards, which are promulgated by 2010 DC. And the third one is the Single Audit Act, because you have more than $750,000 federal money. All three of those reports are clean audit opinions. No issues, no findings, no question costs. When we look at this year's federal, or the 2020 federal Single Audit, we had about 5.7, almost 5.8 million compared to 5.8 last year. Very consistent, some of that money kind of leaked away during March, April, and May, of course. Low risk audit, that's not something that we just invent ourselves. That is because you had clean audit opinions for the last two years. You had no findings or question costs. And as such, our threshold of what we need to look at is 20% of those federal dollars. This year, we looked at the special education cluster. That was about $1.3 million, 22%. Again, no findings, no question costs. Last year, in 2019, we did 1. The data collection form is going to be summarized probably in the next month. It's electronic format that both Deb and I have to sign. And it's all electronic. It basically provides financial statements, footnotes to the federal government, as well as the Single Audit. Extra classroom activity, about $150,000 at the start. It raised about $299,000, spent about $273,000, and about $179,000 as well. One item that occurred late in state aid process was the concept of CARES aid and what the state and the federal government agreed to do. This year, in the 2020 fiscal year, you should have received $1.6 million more than state aid than you had gotten. What happened was the state and the federal government agreed to take the $1.6 million, which is through the CARES Act. It would not be processed in 2020, but it would become a 2021 relevant item. And with that, it becomes, state money is now changed into federal money. So I hope that over the months, you'll look for that. I don't know what the protocol is and how you are going to get it. Yes.
Can I ask a question? When you say 2020 or 2021, are you speaking calendar years?
I'm speaking June 30th, 2020. It happened this fiscal year. And then you have the next fiscal year, which is July, June.
Okay, I see, okay, thank you.
Because that's a 12-month, but it's June.
Beginning July 1st. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Communication with those charged with governance, management letters, all of those are fine. Looking at next page, page two, summary of funds. About $35 million compared to $32.2 million in 2019. That was almost a $2.7 million increase. The restricted funds are items that you had over the years. If you look at only at one item, the debt service reserve, that was used to pay interest and capital. In essence, when you look at all of those reserves, most of them have brackets. What happened is they took some of those reserve monies and put it in designated it, designated for subsequent year. You'll see that increase of $1,930,000. Just wanted to let you know that once you've done that, that's part of the budget, 4242. So when you're looking at the 2022 budget, you're going to have to use that. You're going to have to keep that number, otherwise the property tax could move if you don't keep that number. Lastly, unassigned fund balances, that's 4%, and that's what the state likes to save. You're looking at capital projects, you have a $19 million deficit. I would not be worried about that, because when you are doing construction projects using BAM anticipation notes, that is a short-term note. It is a liability, and the expenses outweigh the revenues. In August of this year, you issued a $17.7 million bond that has life until August 2035. In addition to that $17.7 million bond, you've got a bond premium. That means that the pricing of the $17.7 million was affected by interest rates. And then basically, the interest rate seems high, so that's why they gave you another $2.2 million as a premium. So overall, that is almost a $20 million bond that you've gotten. So that negative equity that you look at will be eradicated in fiscal 2021. And lastly, overall, again, you're looking at fund balances of $16 million compared to $27 million. It looks like $10 million, but again, that bond took care of that in this current fiscal year, 2021. Overall, on the general fund, overall general fund revenue was about $96 million compared to $94 million. About $2 million higher, 2.1%. Property tax went up 681,000, 1.6%. And state aid was about $1.2 million, 2.4%. On the expenditure side, going to page four, you'll see the all the expense categories, salaries, employee benefits, retirement system, debt service, transportation, et cetera. The greatest combination, of course, is salary and employee benefits. Over the last three years, they've been extremely consistent. 67.8% this year of total general fund expenditures, 67.4% of 2019, and 66.9% of 2018. One thing to just break out a little bit is the teacher retirement system contribution. In 2019, the contribution was 10.68%. The contribution in '20 was 8.86%. So you saved about $522,000 just in the teacher retirement system, on a year-to-year basis. ERS did go up a little bit, but not a lot. Transportation went down about $1.6 million, again, mid-March. They've been kind of shut down employees, so there weren't a lot of buses moving back and forth after mid-March. Overall expenditures were up 3%, about $2.7 million compared to 4% in 2018, which was about $4 million. On page five.
Okay, yeah, it's got a question. Yeah, question, but if you compare the expenditures with the revenue, it looks like the revenue was like almost $3 million greater. Correct. What happened, does that, that's simple-minded, but did that go back into?
Right into the fund balance.
Also into the fund balance.
That first page has that already.
What gets on that? Thank you.
On page five, it's what we call the government-wide summary and reconciliation. This is a process where we take cash basis financial statements and make them look like a corporate entity. So here you have your, all of your brick and mortar, all of the equipment that you've had. You have it as capital assets as opposed to being an expenditure when you pay for it. Also, you have all your long-term liabilities and short-term liabilities. Here, you had your bonds. You have other post-employment benefits, liabilities. You have a TRS asset of pension. Overall, this is more of a corporate model. In that position, with $68 million compared to $72 million last year, that's $3.3 million down. And I can tell you, this is one central item. March 31st is the cutoff for ERS. ERS has a fiscal year in the employer retirement system, New York State employer retirement system has a fiscal year of April 1st to March 31st. At this point in time, the actuaries do their math. As of March 31st, well, what happened in the middle of March? The stock market went down. In the ERS system alone, there was a $19 billion washaway. I'm sure today, most of it is back. But at that point in time, the liability for the ERS became more significant than what's previous year. So that $3 million deficit is really, really restricted to that increase within your liability. The school district's a portion of share of the total liability ERS went up over $3 million. And that's pretty much what that change was. Communication with those charged with governance, I'd really speed through this, but not a lot that we haven't discussed already with the audit committee. Before the debate, you might as well look at some of those footnote disclosures. They're riveting. You'll get to see it very quickly. Maybe Thursday night, you want to look at it again and fall asleep during that football game. And lastly, in the management letters, really not a lot. We talked a little bit about extra classroom activity and reconciliation of student pleasures. And then just some of the clubs are just hanging out there. It doesn't mean that they're not doing stuff, they just don't need money. With that, again, very short and concise, but I'll answer any questions.
I'll open it up to any questions for Mr. Chabon. It was a great presentation, even the second time around. We really enjoyed it, all of us audit committee members.
Yeah, we appreciate having somebody like you here now and asking, please, looking over. Thank you, appreciate it.
Any corrections or any thoughts down the road? I think you have to really, really, really look at Albany. And Albany has to look at Washington. If two of those guys don't get along, it's going to be one. And I'm being honest, even for our office and people, those two guys have to get along. And, you know, there was a stimulus bill that was supposed to come out. It was supposed to be 1.3 to 1.6 trillion, I can't even say that. I just seem like a trillion, what the heck is a trillion? But now he came out of the hospital and he said, "Don't, don't add..." It's a political football, isn't it?
Yes.
That's all I can tell you. School districts are going to need money. You're spending a lot more money this year than you spent last year already. Schools, I've had schools who are already thinking that. They're looking at their fund balances, "Okay, I've got to have this here, but that may not add anything for 2022." So whether you, you know, from a verbal perspective, talk to somebody, then talk to senators, because something has to go, has to move.
Most of us didn't have a meeting this past Saturday on there. There were several, actually, around the meeting, but Thomas Javits was there, Space I know of, Orkin there. Our Assemblyman from this area, Art Personal Mike Morris was there, but also Ben Wells, Mr. Morell. There are a lot of people on that call. And both of them, they really seemed to have a good understanding, because we showed them several different divisions, how much we have spent because of COVID, and how much we have lost because of state cuts. And Deb, someone. And we are actually in a much better position than a lot of our fellow districts.
You are.
Mr. Chabon or Ms. Quater, I don't know if either one of you would like to speak to the refinancing that we did this, was it this month, last month? Whatever month it was, just to kind of talk about in terms of getting some extra money for the district in whatever way we can, just whoever.
That was the bond that I spoke on, right, for $7.7 million?
It's the one, we're saving $11,000 for the next five years.
Okay, so you did a refi.
Yes.
Okay.
This is for the people on our lives here, the people that.
I'm sorry, that's the picture. Is everybody awake in here? Okay.
There you go.
There you go. Yeah, I need to attach your hand. So the district had two older bonds, and actually, if our community members who are watching from home, it's a point of pride, September point of pride, and it was mentioned in there. So we had two older bonds that we were able to refinance. They were fallible, we were able to refinance them. And the interest rates were so low, it was 0.34 interest rate that we refinanced these bonds at. And we ended up, we will save over the next five years, $101,000. Original projections were, we would save about $300,000, but because 1.2 dollars, the interest rates are astronomically low. So that, of course, will help our bottom line over the next five years by itself. I know audit committee is very supportive of our luxury funding.
What we initially looked at was, we've marched through, we had a lot of discussions regarding public history, it was not pretty clear. But very surprised over the report that things turned around from that point.
Right. Yes, Chairman Pratt of our audit committee. And when we did look at it in that, the original projection was, we'd probably save just over $300,000. And then with COVID, they were like, "No, let, don't do it now." We've got no idea what the market's going to do. But then the interest rates became so low, they resurrected and said, "No, now it's $90,000." So we didn't even want to answer that. We're very pleased to say that for the district and for our community members at home. We are constantly watching our pennies. Your tax rate per thousand, your true value tax rate per thousand did go down. If you lived in the towns of Cambria, Pembroke, or Latour, your tax bill reassessed didn't change. Actually, it went down. Unfortunately, the city of Latour, utilization rate is very low, so it has this from COVID. But we are looking out for you at home and the community, and also to provide wonderful programs, we're a student, it's very little bit, because we've got to involve our teachers and our parents and our staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Great. Have you got one other question? I don't know if this is related to this or not, but when we get building aid, is there a certain percent based on your poverty level? Is that discussion happening? Or is that, I know it's not really part of the sound, but are we still at 89% or 90%? Or what is, is that determined, how's that determined?
It is determined on your average wealth ratio and how poor you are, just like I said. The Facilities Committee of the Board of Education, Chairman Sando, can help me with it. You share that committee. Our financial analyst, Rick Nancy, he will give us the projections. It's right now still at 89 cents. Now, before we look, the higher the rate, the wealthier we look, the lower the rate. But as we do go forward with capital projects, what it would mean is the state would reinvest ourselves, in a point of already paid, 89 cents on a dollar, and then our capital reserves would pick up the other 1 cent. So it's not reflective in this report per se. But when you look at the capital project, that was what we spend versus what we're giving in building aid.
Protect the bottom line.
Yes, it does protect the bottom line. And actually, some of our buildings are a wee bit higher than our actual debt. And this refinancing of the debt will even help that bottom line more.
Thank you, thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, Mr. Chabon, I'll let you get a little bit of time to, you know, read the footnotes again.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is another discussion item, the 2020-2021 school reopening plan. And I will turn that over to Subir Gendry.
Thank you, President Young. Several months ago now, which seemed like a whirlwind and an impossible task before us, Latour City School District designed, developed a school reopening plan for COVID-19, the pandemic that we were facing. Mid-July, under Cuomo, released guidance, health schools should reopen, in addition to the State Education Department and the New York State Department of Health. And by the end of July, July 31st, it was expected that school districts in New York State submit a school reopening plan. In a period of two weeks, the Latour City School District came together in a highly collaborative fashion. And I want to extend special thanks to our maintenance department, our custodians, our clerical staff members, food service department, nurses, all of our teachers, all of our administrators, our support staff, parents, and our board of education, for coming together to meet that deadline with a pretty intense task before us. During the month of August, the Latour City School District put details to the school reopening plan. And towards the middle of August, into the end of August, offered as a choice to parents, a full remote learning model in addition to the hybrid model, which was included in the school reopening plan. As part of the full remote learning model, we as parents to commit to that model for the first 10 weeks of school, which ends November 13th, 2020. This evening, we want to discuss with the Board of Education, what we do is we approach the first 10 weeks of the school year for that particular population of students and parents in that particular model of learning, the full remote learning model. Last Friday, we were given some information, some data on our school reopening plan, including transportation numbers and some data indicating how many students we have in the group cohort, goal cohort, which are our hybrid students, and our total 100% remote students. When given a choice for a full remote learning model, about 1,416 students and their parents chose a full remote learning model for the first 10 weeks of the school year, K through 12. That averages out to about 110 students per grade level in our district. When we talk tonight about what do we do with that particular model, it seems to boil down to two options. But that's open for discussion in other thoughts that board members may have this evening. The district could open it up, or at least provide an opportunity for parents to change their child's placement from a full remote learning model to a hybrid model at the end of the first quarter. Or we could continue with the current educational models in place, the hybrid model and the full remote learning model. And students would continue with that placement until further notice. The district still has to comply with unchanged, changing, but unchanged for the most part, social distancing requirements, and the wearing of face coverings while all people are in school. So there are still challenges that we must comply with. However, we also understand that the choice that parents get for full remote is coming to an end, and we've discussed how we will address that before November. So with that background, I'll turn it back over to President Young to open up the discussion or any thoughts that you may have.
Sure, I guess before we get into discussion with everybody, have you had meetings with administration about what that would look like and availability of classrooms, that sort of thing? Just in terms of what would be an option or what the administration is taking this closer to the issues?
Yes, thank you. In talking with building principals and other administrators within the district, a couple of things are really, could be problematic. And that would be, as I mentioned, the social distancing. We still won't comply with social distancing, which limits the number of people in our learning environment, in our learning classrooms. So room capacity could very well be a problem in some or many of our school buildings. The other piece of this is staffing. So if we have a large number of students, switch from a full remote learning model into the hybrid model, it's very possible that students could be introduced to a new teacher after the first 10 weeks. So you would have to rework some staffing areas as well.
Anything that you want to add to this Quater or Mrs. Schrader about staffing, transportation considerations? Transportation could be problematic as well.
And you did receive in your friend's access, what the transportation cost. Right now, we are meeting all the social distancing requirements. And of course, whatever the board's decision is to go forward or not, there are some rounds that are a little bit lighter, but we would have to almost like redraw the bus rounds in order to accommodate. So just as Mrs. Bradley referred to, you know, trying to put the children in the classrooms in order to make them look good, it would impact all students riding the buses, because you have to move some students from one bus, one running from another bus. We would be switching them around, and that would be a task. And if you need to do it, we'll do it, but it won't be easy task, but we need to accommodate.
Can I just say something similar? Staffing isn't as spread as shared. Now, there are some both remote sections and in-person sections that are already full. So it would definitely be a challenge in some circumstances, at some grade levels, and in some courses, to be able to accommodate a certain number of students across.
Do you have any talks or requests about students that are in class now that would want to go to full remote?
Yeah, I think there have been some. And, you know, some of the dynamics or the considerations or the factors are interesting. In this region anyway, of the state, the infection rate seems to be relatively low. In fact, today, the Latour City School District hosted COVID-19 rapid testing, which was coordinated by the Nyack County Department of Health for staff members, for employees. And we had about, it was voluntary, not mandated, get about 120 employees to the Latour City School District test for COVID-19. And out of all the tests, we did not, there were no positive COVID-19 results. So that's very encouraging. And now I'll sleepwalk tonight, last night. So, you know, I think a big part of the parents who chose remote may have been concerned about the uncertainty of the spread of the virus, the infection rate. And that seems relatively low at this point. But we are now approaching, or will be approaching, flu season, and that could be a double win. So again, there are a lot of uncertainties that remain. And this will not be an easy task, however we decide to be addressed, to manage, to be fair to parents, to open it up, but also to be able to rework schedules, transportation, and provide. to be fair to parents, to open it up, but also to be able to rework schedules, transportation, and comply with social distancing.
What is the beginning date of the second semester? On the 16th or?
The second quarter?
Yeah.
Yes, so 13th, 14th, I think it's November 17th, Monday, November 17th would begin the second.
Sixteenth.
For 16th.
Yeah, okay.
Would begin the second time.
So when would you have to have a plan in place for, you know, is there a deadline, break off point or deadline for that parents to decide?
Yes, so principals are saying if it's opened up to parents of full remote learners, we need to know that as principals and teachers ASAP because we will need time to rework and see if we can even fit students directly to our schools. In a possible scenario, which was shared with one of the building principals, remote students who choose to come back as hybrid students, if we can't social distance because there are capacity in some classroom spaces right now, they could be in other spaces within that building, but still learning remotely with their teacher because we may not be able to place them in classrooms knowing that we still have to comply with social distancing. So those are possible scenarios. But there is a sense of urgency with determining how to manage this.
For sure. Yeah, I think that the staff felt that because we kind of kept putting it off deciding which way we were going and, you know, which model we were picking for our hybrid model. And I know that, you know, trying to get those schedules done, you know, in that short period of time that we gave them before was stressful and so it would, you know, essentially do the same thing all over again. You know, depending on the.
Sooner we know is better.
Yeah. Trusty here.
So is possible that not just the remote learners, but the hybrid model might have an activity? You're coming back into the building and they have to shuffle around?
There could be shuffling, yes. And Mrs. Schrader, do you want to talk about how that potentially could play out?
Sure. So as I said, we have some sections, both in-person and remote, that are already full. We really tried to comply with contractual class size limits outlined in the contract bargaining agreement. But we have had to shuffle, for example, some remote students who are by attachment, a George Southern student. Maybe working with an animated remote teacher because the George Southern remote section was full. So it could create that if there's shuffle of people. Even my only wish not to be with, you know, a teacher who are in school and they might be shuffled among schools, all those students, and for that's adults, depending on whether it's called hybrid versus remote.
I agree that it would be difficult, but we did promise our parents a 10-week period in which they had to commit. And then after that, they wanted to, they would try and say, I mean, I think you may be surprised, a lot of people may not even want to commit, they may like the virtual. But we did, in August, promise our parents, they're committing to this for the first 10 weeks and then we will be available.
I see that, Margaret.
I was going to have a similar thought to that. I know back in August, it was presented, at least the way I felt as a parent, as you pick now and you may have a choice later, it may not have been said that way, but in my mind, it kind of lay there with me. And I suspect there's a lot of parents out there that feel that way. One thing I worry about is full remote by the six, seven, eight week mark. Maybe it's not working for certain set of kids and maybe, maybe it just, maybe they're just not getting what they need. So that parent wants to get the choice. I don't want to, I don't want to say no to that parent because I don't want to hurt the kid. I don't want two years from now for that child to still be mine. And I worry about the full remote and that happening because I just give them a nature, it's, you're off track. Some kids just can't handle it, there's supposed to be certain hate groups, I would think. But to get to the point I'm trying to make, why don't we do another survey and just see, are we talking about 50 kids just applied on whom? Are we talking about 400 kids? We don't even know what we're talking about. Why don't we survey again and make sure that, you know, parents know that this, if you answer the survey, it's not binding, but so we know where we're starting, you know?
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't you just ask the question now to everybody? You know, if anybody wants to change, you know, we'd like to have that input by giving them a date, you know, November 1st, so that we are able to plan for the second quarter.
Whatever we decide though, we know how difficult this is going to be on our administration, on our teaching staff. And it was reiterated in our policy meeting. When we make a decision, we need to stake that decision. We cannot just let parents decide, come in and out.
Right, but we told them 10 weeks, right?
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Second 10 weeks.
Yeah, right.
We want to know now and give them a deadline so that we have enough time to plan for that.
No, yeah, absolutely. But once that decision is made, I feel like for the benefit of our staff and our students, we need to, okay, you know, we tried it out for 10 weeks, now we're giving them the choice. But this is going to be the choice because we can't keep going back and forth.
You mean for the rest of the school year, provided nothing else?
Yes, provided nothing else changes.
I agree with you, you shouldn't have a choice on reading format.
Right.
Right.
You know, this was a trial, this is how men, you didn't like it, whatever one you chose, that's fine. But then you need to go the other way and we need to stop with the in and out because it's.
I agree with you.
With the teaching staff, with the students, with the hospital.
And all those parents now have enough information, is this working for my staff or not, right?
Yeah. Which part you, which part you have, of course. Um, just, yeah. I know that we're talking about just like the model that they're going to be in, but I kind of think it's a good point. And maybe we want to separate it, I don't know, but I kind of think it's a good point in this pilot, it's not really a pilot, but in this new thing that we're doing, I think it's a good time to get a sense of how it's going. You know, getting some questions about, and again, it could be two separate things. Really the important thing is which format are they going to use? My other concern is really how is it working? And so, you know.
It's a good point because you could ask for feedback as to, you know, what parents see as maybe a way to, if you modify things, to make it better.
It's a nice quality improvement.
Yeah.
Things, you get an idea, oh, okay, so we did this, how's it going?
Yeah, great, great. Going up.
And I think as much information as you can give to them and what's going to make them.
Give them as much time as possible too.
Right, right. But I mean, I really think, I mean, I don't know how openly we can do this, Kelly, but maybe we could, you know, get the input, like do another enforcement program. Maybe sometimes people don't, that didn't come, might come in voice, I think. You know, I don't know if I'd be too exposed to something that just.
In person, maybe.
Instead of having the parents come in again, you know, to just, to get some feedback. Not to do.
Maybe in the past week, we haven't made a schedule.
Yeah, maybe, you know, like, let's get it going, just to get a kind of feedback. I mean, I think everybody taking a stop, some of the teachers, might just not give them that.
Is that something you, like you would get emails from parents that have questions that we could answer or?
Well, I think, I think that if it's just a, um, just a feedback situation, I don't know that it would need to go necessarily through me or, um, you know, and I think that, I think that is a good idea. And I think it'd be good to kind of keep those in two separate things, like, like Trusty Kirshah said. You know, whether or not they're picking a model is one thing. They're, you know, what's going on with the models is another thing. Because I don't think, I think that we want to keep whatever survey or anything like that. We want to make sure that it's as concise as possible. I know there was, you know, a little bit of confusion before, so I do think that if we're asking them about which model they're picking, I don't know if we call that a survey. I don't, I think that, I think a survey needs to be more of an opinion type of thing. Maybe we do a survey in conjunction with an in-person session. I don't know, I don't know how feasible that would be for next week's meeting. It seems quite feasible for in terms of planning to do that and all that. Yeah, I think.
So it's like we do that for different models?
Yes, yeah. Like we need immediate information about what people want to do.
About what?
And we need some time to plan for enforcement and supporting to find out how the model fits. Voice, President Morgan?
Yeah, I, I agree with Trusty Williams. I think we need to know what our numbers look like, if it's possible. And I think if a survey had been done to get those numbers and, I don't, nothing binding, but so we can get numbers so building principals have a chance to look at what changes might have to be made. I think in a perfect world, and of course in a imperfect world, extending this out as it is for another 10 weeks would be ideal. That's just my thought. I think we're working on a lot of the bottoms right now. The first few weeks might have been difficult, but I think teachers and students are getting more acclimated to it. And I would think they are studying a lot more smoothly. But again, some students can't learn remotely. Maybe parents have found that out, this method can work fine and maybe a change needs to be made. And going back to what Trusty Williams and Trusty Kelvin said, we did ask parents for a 10-week commitment and we're coming up on that 10 weeks. And maybe, you know, we should at least offer them the opportunity, if it's there, to make a change. I don't know if that's going to be feasible or not, but I think we do need to know the numbers and get a baseline before we move forward. You know, they keep conducting a second wave of COVID. The governors come out with some different zones and he may be closing schools. We don't know, we just don't know. And like Mrs. Bradley said, the flu season is coming upon us, which is just going to make things more difficult. I hate to see kids having to change teachers. I think that could be disruptive. And again, the name being the social distancing. But I, again, I think the survey can help us get that baseline.
I guess I'm still not clear with, maybe just the use of the word survey. There's a letter that goes out that says, if you want to change, you need to have your input. That's like a one-on-one with every parent. And then there's a survey which says, how are things going? Looking for your feedback, you have suggestions on how you might make suggestions improve. It's almost like the survey is that, but the letter that goes out is specific to numbers and because otherwise, you need to know, you know, I'm going to have 12 more students that are going to be in-person at our detail this, after the second semester, right, second quarter. So that's like, that's the way I see it, is one the letter and one the survey. I'm not sure about the in-person, how that works exactly. Is it part of the survey or?
That would be, that's, but it would be that second.
It is along the same lines, but more personal.
I guess, Mrs. Bradley, you could just clarify. So I know we're talking a lot about what the parents are choosing and what model they want to choose and whether they're choosing after 10 weeks or for the rest of the school year. As a district, have we decided that what we're doing is what we're doing? The hybrid and full remote model, those two options are what the options are going to be for the rest of the year unless something changes and, you know, we can come back to school or we have to go forward. Just so that I guess, just so we're clear on whether that's what we're choosing and then the parents go, you know, that's another issue, we're going to have the parents going to choose for 10 more weeks and through the rest of the year. In terms of what the district is planning, is it your intention and the district and everybody's intention to continue with what we're doing now unless something comes up?
Yes, we didn't know where we would be at the end of September, beginning of October, we don't know where we'll be in November. So yes, the district's intention is to continue to certainly offer hybrid and full remote. It's the two models. If this time it remains impossible to have full in-person for all students because of social distancing requirements. So those would be the two models that we would continue to offer. Having said that, we now need to know sooner rather than later if there are any significant changes that parents wish to make between those two models of learning.
Has we considered changing the hybrid model? Or is this the 212 the one that you had to stay there?
Yes, so a couple of things with that. The 212, the remote Wednesdays seem to be in a good place for the district for a couple of reasons. It separates the cohorts. So we have our blue cohort in our Monday and Wednesday, those are the same people in our building. Same with Thursday and Friday, that Wednesday, that midweek, remote learning, which also includes additional cleaning, helps us to transition from one group of people to another group of people. That seems to be working for those couple of reasons. Let's just say that we get all of our remote learners, the 1,400 wanting to come into our hybrid model. Then we may have to rethink the hybrid model. And we may have to divide, further divide our student population, divide those two cohorts even further. And maybe the 212 model becomes, um, blue cohort one is in blue cohort two, maybe blue cohort one only comes on Mondays and blue cohort two comes on Tuesdays. And we keep remote Wednesdays. And then we further divide the gold cohort, it would go cohort one, gold cohort two. So the possibility or the potential exists if we have many remote learners wanting to join hybrid, we may have to further divide those cohorts because we have to comply with social distancing.
You're welcome. So I guess, um, I guess I kind of heard a little bit of everything in terms of whether or not we want to commit to 10 more, have the parents commit to 10 weeks or commit to the rest of the year. It does sound like we want to open that up to parents to, if they feel that they need to make a change, that, you know, they have the ability. Do you have any idea of a, of a date that you think would be appropriate?
I think for a deadline that they would have to notify their school principal by to let them know that they are going to want to make a change.
And then another question too, is it, are we only offering as to, when we're already remote students saying, would you want to come back to the hybrid? Are we going to open it to all parents and say, I know you've chosen hybrid, would you like to try or would you like to move to another? Is the hybrid not working for you?
I think the hybrid model is our model. We offer as a choice, a full remote. So we could do, we could do both, we could offer both. Or we could just focus on the full remote learning population because that was the choice. And that was the group of people that we had to connect to 10 weeks. And get that data, so we could kind of coordinate.
Mrs. Barry, how would you then contact the parent who would do, by school? In school, contact the remote learners? Would the district send out something, asking, do you want to change? You know what I mean? How do we do that?
So we send out some sort of communication where parents respond and, I'm trying to, I have some questions sketched out. So possible, if we focused on the full remote learning population. So possible, if, if we focused on the full remote learning population, some possible questions could be, um, if it is possible to switch to a hybrid model after the first 10 weeks, would you do so? Yes or no? What is your reason for wanting to switch from the full remote learning model to the hybrid model? And we might be able to get a little bit of feedback like we were looking for with that question. If you switch to the hybrid model, would you be able to provide transportation for your child? We would need to know that. Um, and then any other questions that you might think, um, should be added, but those are three, three questions that, that we've developed so far. Um, it's almost, I think it's a good idea for responses to go directly to principals. So that they get a handle on this because, you know, I'm hearing it's, it's different at your park than it is at the high school. And then we've got MSL and that is an intermediate school. And then we've got 434 buildings who are more similar than the other buildings. But there are clearly differences in the model amongst our, all of our school buildings. And then once principals get that, we will come together and collate that and look at, um, how it looks overall in the district as a district.
I, I would be very questioning if it was basic and simple or difficult. Thank you for the answer.
Why would we not offer the choice of hybrid?
We, we could do that. Um, what I wanted to convey was, um, in our school year, we planned, we chose the hybrid model for everybody. Later in August, we decided to offer the parent choice of remote. Um, so that was a group of people that we gave, we asked for a commitment from for the first 10 weeks. We didn't ask for a commitment from hybrid at the scale. Um, but that's not to say that you couldn't, you know, you couldn't open it up to everybody to see if they wanted to switch from either model to.
Because maybe with the flu season approaching, they're thinking, well, maybe I don't want my child in school, you know, in the now. Additional.
And we got, and if we did receive an increase in remote learners, or we might be more staff, we have to switch that around. There'll be extra remote learners.
And then are we giving them the choice of, um, whether they commit to another 10 weeks or the rest of the year or?
I think, I think we'd have to, um, unless we might keep doing this every 10 weeks, I mean, the process may come for the notice.
I do, yes.
Trustee Brad?
I'm not comfortable not getting an opportunity to, and if you chose hybrid, you're ten, you're ten percent. It seems like we're cutting out a ton of population of people. Would you like the transportation? Do we still have kid walking? Do we still have bus, uh, walkers?
Your answer is yes.
So I think we need to make it very clear. If you put something blanking out there saying, if you choose to come to hybrid, you need transportation. People might be taking the bus or the car, or driving on the, you know, the, 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 it's a long distance. It's a long distance.
Yeah, yes.
How many of that habits do you think cannot be?
I, I do not know that, that exact number. I don't, when the service came out, we were just hoping parents. I want to say it was like 1,200 parents that were eligible, so they didn't have to drive. I mean, there were a little bit, 100 parents that stated they were going to, they were very concerned they cannot just, they're not going to invite their students. But not all of those, it's just under 900, not all of those students. Actually, then it rose to 1,200, not 1,200. It got to 1,200, but not all of those students were eligible to all the related communications. So there was like 400, at least 400 that were eligible that chose, they, their parents had to drive to hybrid. However, when you talk about the hybrid, it could be, a lot of parents were very nervous about putting their child on the bus. And they weren't so nervous about sending them back. But they might not decide if they've been driving, if they decide, you know what, I've heard of no issues on the bus. I'm going to put him on the bus. Now you have remote learners coming back who might be eligible. And those who were eligible for transportation and the parents chose to drive, you might want to come back. So, um, transportation, it will be challenging for the parents. So I think that if the parents chose to drive, it was very pretty to actually make the change. So the context doesn't know.
Okay, so, um, Mrs. Bradley, do you need further direction? It does sound like we would like to, um, open it up to, um, if, if parents need to feel that they need to switch to learning model, um, that we allow them to do that. The ability, as long as we can, we'll figure out logistics, I guess, once the numbers start coming in and, you know, I think it will be important for them to realize that, you know, if they're a fully remote, um, students, they're likely to have a different teacher, um, if they choose to go hybrid. Um, you know, just kind of make sure we're, um, letting them know, I think, to Trustee Chute and his point, literally giving them the most, most information we can about what it means and what we're, you know, what we're talking about here.
Uh-huh. So you, you're, um, you're wanting to open it up for both models to have an opportunity to switch?
Yeah, I think, I think that is, um, one of the, yeah, I think that's, I think it's good and I think, you know, I think it might have been, it might be necessary anyways. Um, you know, if we have, I think, just Trustee told us that, like, if they, you know, Mike even out or.
Mike has an offset, right?
Yeah. So that might be necessary anyways. Um, or, or if we might have everybody feeling like they don't want to, you know, change too much with what's going on. And maybe we are making it work as best we can.
Yeah, at PTA at the beginning, um, last year, we were not, and there was a great number of people on the call, which I'm very excited about. But, um, obviously that's a small representation of our very large district, but every parent called and said, I'm not changing. I, whether they were hybrid or they were remote, they were very happy with their choice. So, I mean, obviously that is 15 of us. So a few more parents will not, but I'm willing to bet that you're going to find a lot of people that are just, they've been happy with it. So we may not get a whole lot of, and I kind of hope that is true for, you know, the safety of our administration that has to figure this out.
And that was the general, um, sense from the PTA president's meeting, uh, earlier this week that, um, they expressed their just now feeling like they're a routine, um, and, and that procedures at home for full remote learning. Um, and they spoke on behalf of other parents, but, um, the only way to find out is to send something out. Yeah. And that's where we, we need to start. So that's what we'll do.
Great. Um, and then, do you have any, yeah, sorry. Do you have any specific questions or areas that you would like to adjust that, um, that you believe is important other than those three that I just, um, shared a few that I, um, not for the first.
Yeah. I just want to know if you want to switch, let parents know that that will be until further notice. Could be the rest of the school year, or could be social distancing new access on, on school buses and these questions and could change. Our goal is to, obviously, is to.
Do you have a date when you think that, if I use the information so that you're able to plan possibly?
Um, yeah. I'm thinking maybe we'll be able to get something out by Friday. And then the parents, um, you know, certain next week and, you know.
Couple of weeks, but make a decision.
You want to go to contact the principal?
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll regroup with the principals, um, tomorrow after this meeting and talk about how they keep the best way to go around this. I, I kind of wait if the principals get that there so that we keep track and kind of, you know, take visuals and start pointing at them. Um, but, um, yeah, so we'll just talk to principals.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah. And you're, you said you're also going to, um, put in there also that this is what it's going to be going forward?
Yes. Yeah. I think the language, unless you have specific language, I'm thinking, you know, for lack of a better term, until further notice. Um, you know, unless you want to say the rest of the school year or the end of the school year or.
I like.
So we're clear.
I think that's, you know. Because we could come back to school tomorrow or, you know, well, we could shut down.
Right.
And it also gives us, it also gives us the opportunity in December to say, you know what? With a lot of group places and things that are going on, you know, maybe, maybe we want to be offered it up again. I don't know.
Yeah, I think, I think that this direction is good and that's how we'll, we'll proceed and, um, certainly let them know the results and what that child was taking and just whether it's staffing or.
You said, well, what's your, uh, the, the home back to hybrid question? Is it, do you believe that if you're remote and you go back to hybrid, you're getting a different teacher? That it's more than likely the case?
Yes.
I think that's a question that should probably be, like, mentioned. That'd be good for it. If you choose to go back to hybrid, your child is most likely getting a different teacher.
I think that only works for, yeah.
I'm sure that's, yeah.
So if you're changing your model, chances are your student will be having a different teacher.
We know.
Yes.
Most likely you would get a different.
We'll make that clear.
Yeah, because I think that is very, we don't, we don't do our best to make that very clear.
Right. That's what I'm saying. That's why, you know, Dawn really needs to get a really good, you know, that, that high school is a monster.
Yeah.
This is, there's the course offerings and the, it's a monster. So, it's its own, it's its own world.
I think that's why timing will be important. Yeah, there is, sorry, because there are teachers that do both. Yes, there are teachers that are teaching remotely, one area of the mass.
Actually, there's a teacher teaching from home to the class.
Yes, so that teacher is literally both of the students are in the classroom.
Yeah, and it's really, it's, I, yeah, broken in knowledge, but it's going really well. Because there's a teaching assistant in the room. There's some things that the teaching assistant is changing, so, so, I don't want to be in. But, um, the, the process, I'm impressed that we're able to tell me that and I'm also impressed that how well it's working.
This is Sharon.
I'm sorry, I just, I, I just wanted to stress how the timing will be extremely important. You know, I've heard especially in the recent 12th, if we're going to make changes, it could take weeks to get those changes in place. So the sooner we have permanent commitments from families, like in the next week or so, you know, it'll take that long.
Like September 16th, maybe you'd want to give you a month's plan.
Realistically, I think given all of.
No, I, I agree. I can't imagine trying to do it, but, yeah, I, I think, I think that makes sense.
For all pieces, transportation, staffing, transportation facilities, we'll have to talk about those.
Yep.
Because we can't do the transportation until we know where the students are going.
Absolutely.
So it's like, we're on the back end.
Yeah.
So the principals need to get everything worked out and then, you know, then we have to try to communicate with them, so. And then notify students. If their bus is changing, just like teachers, we have to notify them, nope, your bus is changing, so.
So Dr. Wilkma, since you're here, um, do you see any complications with, um, we, we develop a survey, but have the results go back to the principal?
Um, I don't, I don't see any complications with doing that. We could do just about anything. I have Patty working on the, within the communication system, we can send a personal email with a survey built into the message. So they'll get their message, respond in the message, and then when they, uh, when they submit that, it can go to where we want it to go. So I think we have the ability to, to do that, or we can put another survey out like we have through Google. We have, we have a lot of ways to get the information. I, I kind of like the idea of the direct communication to the parent. All they have to do is open that and respond and we'll probably get a lot of responses that way.
Yeah, it would have to be personal, you know, because they'll have to know, they'll have to be sent.
They also have the ability to do a phone survey, um, which one per, there's three response, which two present response. So we're exploring. So as long as the survey is simple, we can do that. And it sounds like this may be a perfect opportunity to do that. We've.
But would you get, would we, would the principals get the name of the student? That way they're going to need to know, they're going to need to know student's name. And, um.
That's like the DVD TV stuff, like there's a letter that goes out that's asking the specifics. Do I want to change from the remote model to the hybrid or vice versa? That's, that's one thing. But then the survey is a different.
No, we're talking about giving parents the option by an email, whether it's a phone, you know, phone call that's automated.
Okay.
Or I, my children are in two different buildings. They both had, um, put, uh, some letters. I would also suggest that you should, if somebody goes home physically to those schools too. Even though the kids are remote, sometimes the parents are outside of the home.
A letter?
Yes, yeah. Because the kids are on every day. Sure, they're doing, they're doing their thing, but still some parents are not that kind of, they. They don't know.
Uh, okay.
So I would just suggest also a hard copy, like into both families as well.
So, for a hard copy, and.
I mean, I know, I know I personally love getting emails. It's quite efficient. I don't have to worry about getting sent an email. Yeah. But the phone survey is kind of like.
But you, if you get all these different types of responses, are you, are you able?
People don't want, don't wait three times. But you don't have to do them. Yeah. Or maybe instead of sending one or home, just letting your parents know, listen, we need to know your choices. Here's the way you can do that.
Or starting with, were it email suffice? An email with what you were describing?
We, we actually be able to figure out who has email and who does not. And people who do not, would be sent the phone message or we can do a phone message followed by an email or an email followed by a phone message. If you don't put all the responses.
Could we, could we send out the email and then send out a hard copy and in the hard copy have it say, you know, as a follow-up to the email, if you have not responded via the email, please contact your principal. You know, and, you know, just to, so send the email out and then send the letter out. It's almost like a follow. Because obviously that email we were going to, you could send out the letter and sort of in there saying, you know, just a reminder, you know, if you need to, you know, whatever the email says and then have them in that letter say that they're going to need to contact their building principal if they need to make any changes. And I think that maybe, and I mean, I hate to even say this out loud because I know that there's going to be a lot of administrators and, um, clerical staff like, you know, shaking their fist, but I think that there probably needs to be follow-up with anyone that's saying that they want to make a change. Rather than just making that change. If you get a survey that says a parent wants to go full remote instead of hybrid, I think that there needs to be some sort of phone call just clarifying. So just to make sure you want to switch. And what this is, you know, this is what we're going to do. This is what your schedule will look like. We'll get you out of your schedule. Just a kind of a follow-up with anyone that is choosing to change. And I'm hoping that we don't have a ton of changes, but I think that definitely needs to, just so that we don't have any confusion if they, they, they filled out the survey wrong or.
Is it one letter for family too? Because they might have two, three, four students in different schools.
There's got to be a way, there's got to be a way that the parent inserts each child's name and their desire for whatever model. That's all we really need. No. What's your child's name and do you want them in hybrid or do you want them remote? What's your current model?
Yeah, what's the current, what's the current? And then do you want to change?
That's all we really need to know right now.
Right.
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 So, and anything else could be a follow-up. At the other time, like the transportation, transportation could be, like they say that they're going to make a change. Right?
Yeah, that survey thing, maybe postpone it a week or so. And so this is all done.
Yeah, and I think that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's still the. Yeah, because that's still within the same, we were still within the 10.
I mean, suggestions for approvals.
Yeah, yeah.
Way to look at it.
Yeah, till after this deadline, after, so we're not confusing any.
There you go.
Not having multiple surveys, letters.
That would be good when that, 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 that we go, kind of, like, on the child. Okay, because one of the early surveys, I would have liked to have different ones to have, that the child, I would probably, um, or is it going to, if we don't go out now, the child, the, the student.
Yeah. Yes, they are. All right, so the first thing that we just need to, um, put in for and accomplish is a small questionnaire, a brief questionnaire, um, what is your child's name, then school assignment, what's your current, what's your current assignment, do you want to stay or switch, then you need to ask the, you need to, that's all we need to know right now.
Yep. But I'm on the back, you have to let them know that if they switch, you know, and when you ask for a participation, I, trustee, if you're eligible for transportation, would you be the, um?
Yep.
I think, I read up one other thing. After the call, after the email, after the letter, there's still going to be that 10% that didn't do any of it, and we write in the call, and we need 100% answers, right? Or we, then if they didn't answer, then I'm skipping, you write in the survey.
I think they could do that, right?
If what?
That you don't have the answer, if you want to do it.
But that's the question, if you don't have everybody answered, then you're not sure if you missed anybody.
Right.
Okay.
We play your song, yes.
Are you looking for 100% of this time?
Have you ever had 100% participation?
You want to take the most of office?
We can do it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I wonder if they could fix what you're saying, have a follow-up, um, not only a change, but a, a answer, a answer.
I think so.
It's going to be a lot.
We should probably all do it.
It needs to be, it needs to be clear in the letter that, that, we're looking for a response, even if there's no change, right? Saying it that way. We need your response, even if you're not changing.
We need, you can mind also that it, this comes down to a lot of the number, we have to be part of this thing off.
Well, that's, that's what we're saying.
I've got the promises, you know, either way, we're going to get beat off whatever we're going to do. That's how, that's why we need to know if it's going to be 10 hits or 200 hits.
Right.
In our action.
Yeah. Okay, step by step. We'll send this brief questionnaire out, and you will respond to the gap. If it's overwhelming, you may have to go back to the vendor. You may have to say no, and then say, um, the next, the next 10 weeks.
And you need the response within a, a week, right?
Yeah.
Like, by 16th of September or something like that.
I totally agree.
Or after, this summer?
No.
I retire. Saturday, every day, Saturday to me.
Well, and so then, we do have a meeting next week, so we can kind of, get an update.
At least a little bit, you know, we won't have full, but maybe I can kind of give
us a little bit of an update.
Yeah.
For how many people we have, an extra morning meeting.
Yeah. So, okay, so you have a night direction, I think, yeah. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We want to make this work for everybody as best we can. Okay. Um, so, back to the agenda. Uh, next item on the agenda are action items. We have business matters, one through 17. And I need a motion to approve, please. Trustee Tobin, I need a second. Is that trustee Kirshat or what? Thank you. Uh, discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on our agenda are personnel matters. Uh, number one, we have appointments, resignations, and other. We have items one through eight dated 9/18. I need a motion to approve, please. So. Vice President Linderman, I need a second.
Second.
Secretary Sandell, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Also, under appointments, resignations, and other, we have items nine through 16 dated 10/7. I need a motion, please.
Okay.
Trustee Pratt, I need a second.
Second.
Vice President Linderman, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Um. Yeah, I think I might have the date wrong, I think I might have reversed those dates. Did I have, was the nine through 16, 10/2?
September 25th.
September 25th, sorry. All right, and so then I have, also under appointments, resignations, and other, I have, um, items 17 through 26 dated 10/2. Thank you. I need a motion to approve, please. Trustee Kirshat, I need a second.
Second.
Trustee Teter, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Also, under personnel matters, we have the second reading and adoption of the following policies. 4100, restraint and seclusion in use of behavioral interventions and supports, and 5691, communicable diseases. I need a motion to approve, please.
Motion.
That was Secretary Sandell, and your second?
Second. Trustee Tobin, I think.
Okay, trustee Tobin, discussion?
I think I do, I changed, um, I had to try to send out, and I was going back, and I was like, um, last, I was doing my first set of that, and I think.
On which policy?
Uh, 5691, communicable diseases. Um, but I think it's kind of after that, in the end, the edit's gone, it's got there, and almost exactly what I'm hearing now, the thing that's missing is healthcare, that I keep doing, and, and the first one. And that's really what I'm thinking.
Yes.
Aye.
But we would like to add, put those two spots.
Mrs. Shager, do you have that?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, motion carried. And with that, I think the last item on our agenda is to adjourn, so I need a motion, please. Trustee Herr, I need a second.
Second.
Trustee Tobin, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll adjourn. Thank you, everyone.